All right, I'm going to call the February 5th Sammamish City Council's study session to order. Our first order of business is amendments to Sammamish Municipal Code prohibiting the circumvention of zoning density and the division of land. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Jeff, Jeff Thomas, our Community Development Director, would like to give us a bit of an introduction on this.
Great, thank you. Good afternoon, City Council. Jeff Thomas with Community Development. So, we're going to take you through a short slide deck this afternoon, which is really intended to supplement the Agenda Bill and the attachments that were included in your packet for both this afternoon's study session as well as tomorrow's public hearing. So, we've got about a dozen slides, shouldn't take too long, and we'll certainly have ample time for any questions that you may have. As Lyman mentioned, and as the Mayor mentioned, this is a presentation on amendments to Sammamish Municipal Code 19A08190 prohibiting the circumvention of zoning density with the division of land. So, a short legislative history, going all the way back in time to 2005 when council adopted an ordinance essentially known as the Net Density Ordinance, which changed the way that we here in Sammamish calculate density from a gross basis under the old King County regulations that we inherited to a net basis, a system that we still use today, 13 years later. Fast forward to June of 2010, that was the last time that the subdivision regulations were updated here in Sammamish. Title 19A was adopted, and the subject section of code that we're here to talk about today and consider tomorrow was part of that ordinance in 2010. Fast forward again, if only time flew this quickly with all things, right? September of last year. In September of last year, the City Council at that time adopted an emergency ordinance that essentially tinkered with the language in this 19A08190 to include, and you'll see there in quotes on the slide, a key phrase, which essentially included future development tracts or reserve tracts as being subject to the provisions of this specific regulation. Lots were already included in that, and we added tracts to that. And we'll get into that in a little bit more detail here in just a few slides. Before we do that, well, actually, let me add first. So then, on the heels of adopting that emergency ordinance, council directed staff and the Planning Commission to essentially go back, like we do with any emergency ordinance, and complete a full legislative review, which essentially entails staff going back, looking at options, doing feasibility analysis, making some recommendations to the Planning Commission, and of course, and Planning Commission makes recommendations to you, the City Council, for final decision. So, council directed that in September after the emergency ordinance was adopted. And that really begged a key question, which was posed to the Planning Commission and being posed again here to the council, is, does the City Council and the city in general want to ensure that we continue to consistently develop to net density provisions? So, before we get too far along here, let's step back and just do a quick technical code lesson, the differences between gross density and net density. To determine gross density, we have a pretty clear-cut example here on the screen. A 10-acre piece of land zoned R4, 10 times 4 is 40. The gross maximum density of that would be 40 lots. Under net density, a similar type 10-acre piece of land, only with some critical areas and buffers on it, as well as some right-aways that would be dedicated for development, you have to back those things out to get your net available acreage. And then you take that, which in this case is 3 acres, multiply it by the zoning density, R4, you get a total of 12 lots. So, gross, you just take the site. Net, under R code, you have to back some things out. All right, so now, I mentioned a few moments ago about the fact that a tract and a reserve tract or development tract was being added to this provision of code. So the question is, what is a tract? Well, our code defines what a tract is. It can be used for a multitude of purposes, including all those things listed there on the left-hand side of the screen. What you see on the right-hand side of the screen would be an example of a critical area tract, a wetland and a wetland buffer that's on it. The question has come up along our legislative journey here as to how many tracts are in the city of Sammamish. After being presented with some information, both at your public hearing for the emergency ordinance, as well as at the Planning Commission public hearing, our GIS staff in the Public Works Department went back and extracted some data from the King Counters Assessor database. What you see in red on this screen are at least 953 different tracts within the city. Those would be tracts that would be used for any of the purposes listed on this slide here on the left-hand side. So, how does this section of code, 19A08190, relate to tracts? Since 2010, the staff's historic application of this section of code has been applied to lots and tracts identically, okay? With no differences. The purpose of that, of course, is to prevent any circumvention of the net density provision. So, for example, lots building to net density, developing to net density, we don't want tracts circumventing that and developing to gross density. So, equal application of the code provision. What happened, dating back to 2016, was that the city was challenged on this historic application of code, which really served as the foundation for the emergency ordinance in this legislative review. So, after the emergency ordinance was adopted in September, staff started to work with legal counsel, and in October, we met with the Planning Commission, and we presented three different options for long-term solution to the Planning Commission. 1, 2, and 3 as listed here on the slide. Number 1 was simply to let the emergency ordinance expire and revert back to the language that was formally in the code prior to September 5th. Number 2 was to simply adopt the exact same language that was contained in the emergency ordinance from September, and just make that the long-term fix code solution. Item 3, which was the staff-recommended option, essentially took Option 2 and did a little bit of additional clarification to it. What you'll see here on the next slide is the actual Option 3 presented to the Planning Commission and now being recommended to City Council for adoption. And the red strike-through, where would it go here? The third line down where future development tract/reserve is backed out again, that was added on September 5th and backed out, because once we took a closer look at the definition of tract and all the uses that it can entail, we decided that this section of code needed to apply to all tracts, just not future development or reserve tracts. So, this is what was presented to the Planning Commission. They completed their public hearing in early November, and deliberated, and voted 5 to 1 to recommend this to City Council for your review and approval. That brings us to today, of course, and, oh yeah, sorry.
We have a question. Councilmember Valdorama?
So, can you explain the rationale for the dissent? You said 5 to 1?
I'd be happy to, yeah. One Planning Commissioner spoke to essentially the public comment that was given at the Planning Commission public hearing, and felt compelled that the folks that spoke at that public hearing, asking for an exception to this provision, should be granted that, so...
Okay, so it was not a technical basis?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So, final slide, that brings us to today. Again, there's your key question up on the screen that you want to ask yourself as we move through the next few days. And tomorrow, we'll have the public hearing and a reading of the ordinance, and if necessary, on February 27th, we'll come back for the second and final reading of the ordinance. So that concludes the staff presentation. In addition to Councilmember Valdorama's question, I'd be happy to take any others.
I don't know how many takers, Jeff.
Wow.
I know, right?
What a good group.
Just really good listeners.
One more, if I may, one more editorial comment. This section of code is in 19A, so of course, that is our subdivision provisions. And you'll recall, three of you will recall at least, from last year, we talked about moving forward with some code updates, and that's been placed on our work program to begin this year. So this Title 19A, as a whole, is subject to that scope of work that we're looking to really go back and do a good job of updating. Not that we would alter this section of code again if council was inclined to approve the ordinance that's before you tomorrow night, but it's examples like this, when we adopt that old King County code, we do some tinkering to it at some point during our history, that we really just want to kind of take it and, you know, flush it down the toilet or something, so that we can move on from it and really get a good code in place that is sound, comprehensive, and will serve us well into the future, so...
Deputy Mayor Harnish.
Just to confirm or submit in my mind, this is the, the language that we're looking at is what staff believes was the intent of the original net density, correct?
Correct.
And there was nothing ever done in the interim from '05 until now that was contrary to that intent, until it was challenged here recently?
Correct. Certainly from 2010 moving forward, the last time Title 19A was updated, I can say that with certainty, that that has been the exact application of the code.
Last call. All right. Thanks, Jeff.
All right, thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Council. Thank you, Jeff.
And next on our agenda, we have a discussion on the Urban Forestry Management Plan. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you very much. So, probably, it doesn't matter where you are, you can go either place.
We will ignore you.
Your mic is on.
We should have, I'm sorry, Council, we should have figured this out ahead of time.
They were thinking they were going to be on at 5:00.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I think we're good. So we have David Goodman here with us tonight. I'll let him do the introductions. Ian is from the Davy Group, but I'll let you proceed with setting the stage.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good afternoon, City Council. It's a pleasure to be with you to discuss our Urban Forest Management Plan, which is a project that we've, has had a long run-up, and we're finally moving right along, so excited to share some updates about what we've been doing so far and introduce our consultant. I'm going to start by providing a little bit of background about what an Urban Forest Management Plan is, and why we're doing one, and how we've gotten to this particular stage in the process. And after that, I'm going to turn it over to our special guest, Ian Scott, from the Davy Resource Group, which is our primary consultant for this project. So, in a broad view, the Urban Forest Management Plan is a plan much like the Comprehensive Plan, in that it establishes a vision and a set of goals for the city's urban forest, but itself is not actually a regulatory or policy document. Much like the Comprehensive Plan, it's going to serve as kind of a guidepost for all of the work that the city does around managing and promoting its urban forest. So, some of the things that are going to be included in the Urban Forest Management Plan are an establishment of a shared community vision for the urban forest. We're going to have a lot of data that we've been working on collecting, both in terms of what the public's interests and priorities are, as well as data about the urban forest, which we're going to get through our canopy cover assessment. We're going to have a number of goals related to the health management and extent of the urban forest, and then we're going to develop some recommendations and policies to help us achieve that, achieve those goals. We're also going to work to establish some shared priorities across the departments in the city, all of whom work on the urban forest in a different way, but might not be working towards the same goals or working from the same information. So, for example, Public Works works on right-of-way, street trees in the right-of-way, where Parks works on trees within parks, and Community Development works on trees in terms of enforcing the tree code and providing, or in processing tree permits. So, we want to unite all of those things under one set of goals and policies. And then the last bullet there, "May result in the development of new programs and regulations." And I say "may" because, as I mentioned before, the Urban Forest Management Plan is not a regulatory document, it's not city code, it's not a program, or a budget, or a maintenance guide, but what it will do is set the framework for the council to adopt all of those things in the future, so that, again, they're all pointing in the same direction. And much like the Comprehensive Plan, the Urban Forest Management Plan, we hope, will become a reference point, not only for those departmental, those departmental programs that we already have, but for some other goals, policies, and master plans that the city's working on, or has worked in in the past, and will work on in the future, such as storm and surface water, land acquisition, parks plans, as well as the two chapters on the bottom there are our tree code and the critical areas code. So we hope that this document will provide some guidance in this area that relate to all of these things moving forward. So a little background on how we got to this particular point in the process. Back in October, the council approved a contract to work with the Davy Resource Group as our primary consultant. They're going to be, Ian will talk a little bit more about this, but they'll be with us all throughout this year and into next year as we develop the plan. And as a somewhat, a side project that will eventually become part of the larger project here, we're working with the Urban Ecology Lab at the University of Washington. They're doing two primary things for us. The first is that they will be completing the first part of our canopy cover assessment, which should be done in the next couple of weeks here, and that will be passed on to Davy Resource Group, who's going to kind of take it and make it a little more useful for our particular purpose here to be included in the plan. And that should be done by April, and we'll discuss that a little more later. And I also, and the other thing that they will do, which is also close to complete, is do kind of a scientific analysis of the city's current tree regulations and policies to see whether they can identify some areas where our policies could be a little more scientifically valid, rather than a little more blunt, without that scientific background. That will be coming out hopefully soon, and there's a lot, I read a draft, and there's a lot of really interesting insights in there, so I think that'll be some good reading. And then my final slide here, before I turn it over to Ian, is just a brief overview of the four different phases of this project. We're about wrapped up with Phase 1, where Ian and the Davy Group have reviewed all of the city's existing plans and policies. We've completed one of what we hope will be three public education workshops. We've completed some stakeholder interviews, which Ian is going to talk about a little bit, and we are about done with our kickoff meetings. And then, coming up shortly, we're going to be doing a little more data analysis with the work that the UW has started. We'll be kicking off our public engagement process this spring, and then moving into the second half of the year, we'll come back to the commission and the council with some project updates and get going on actually drafting the plan. So I'll be happy to talk about that schedule with you at the end of the presentation, but for now, I'm happy to introduce Ian Scott, who will take it from here.
My name is Ian Scott. As I've been introduced, it's a real pleasure for me to be here today to present to you folks the project we're engaging in. A little bit about our company is, I'll start with that. I'll go through some slides that elaborate a little bit more on what David introduced there, is how we put together an Urban Forest Management Plan, and then we're going to lead into a direction that hopefully inspires some questions and some ideas from you as council, to help inform the plan as we put it together. So, the company that I work for is Davy Resource Group Incorporated. We're a subsidiary of the Davy Tree Expert Company, which was founded in 1880, one of the oldest tree care and environmental consulting companies in the United States. In 1970, the family, the Davy family divested their interests, we became an employee-owned company. And as of that time, merged and changed with some modernity, we became industry leaders in the development of such products as the iTree software, which was a partnership with the USDA to create a suite of software models about how trees grow and how they benefit communities where they grow. So you'll hear a little bit more about that iTree software through the course of this presentation and in the management plan itself, as that's become a contemporary benchmarking tool for how trees provide environmental benefits, how the cost benefit of trees. We've also worked with the International Society of Arbiculture to develop tree inventory best management practices. And coming here today, I'm the one individual that you see, but I work as part of a nationwide consulting network. So, all of our projects go through internal vetting, as well as discussions, so that we remain current with national perspective on urban forestry. I put up our company's vision. It's about providing solutions that promote balance among people, progress, and the environment. And part of the reason I put the vision up there is because I want you folks to be thinking about your city's vision for the urban forest. And, you know, when I get up in the morning and I start my job, I consider our company's vision, so that I know that I'm doing the right things towards my company's interests. As the city staff gets started in their day and they get involved with urban forestry matters, there's an absence of vision, right? And that's where we, that's where the Urban Forest Management Plan is going to help unify that and create this sort of guiding framework for city staff, residents to engage in their natural environment. So, what is an urban forest? This sometimes needs some clarification, because it really does include all private and public trees. This is, so there's trees in your parks, natural areas, trees along streets and boulevards, and on your public property, trees out inside here in the plaza, these all count as the city's urban forest. It's not just the natural areas, as some people might think. So we'll be looking at the entire, all growing trees within the city limits, including residential, commercial, and industrial properties, to provide that overall vision, or the overall layout of the city's forest. The Urban Forest Management Plan, as David alluded to, it's meant to be a guiding document for the urban forest, and so how do we put it together? Well, what we do is we develop a set of long-term and short-term goals that are based on adaptive management principles. And that graphic illustration up there is really, this is our strategy for putting it together. We're engaging in discussions right now to find out what we have. What do you have as the city of Sammamish? And then working, so that'll be the canopy assessment is one benchmark, but we'll learn as much as we can about what you have as an urban forest, and then present some options through discussion about what do you want? What do you want the urban forest to look like 20 years from now, 30 years from now? Because trees take so long to establish themselves and grow and contribute to the city, it takes, it's a long, long-range planning process always. So we'll start here now, find out what you want, and then, and then using our skills and our relationship with the city and city staff, we'll propose some strategies for how do you get there. That would be the goals of the plan. And as I said, it was, it's an adaptive management plan, so there's going to be an element to the plan that asks on a somewhat, like a five-year cycle, how are we doing? And you visit that again, and you say, well, how are we doing? You take a look at what we have, and then you ask that question, what do we want, and how do we get there? This initial investment to create this plan is much bigger than likely where you would sit five years from now, but every five years, you'll be opening this plan, hopefully, to engaging the community, and again, looking 20 years into the future, so that you're constantly adjusting. It remains as dynamic as the urban forest and helps staff and citizens know how to engage it. A plan like this is important, because it promotes a shared vision. I think I mentioned that before. That's kind of what we're, that is what we're going to try to put together here. It also communicates the value and benefits of trees. Some of the language that we'll use in there will be taken from scientific periodicals that talk about the value and benefits of trees, and although there may be some debate in the periodicals, you as council will have the opportunity to say, no, this is what we agree as council is the value and benefits of trees. Going forward then, it's also a great place to manage all the challenges and opportunities with the urban forest, because we'll be, we'll look at them all and give feedback on where best the city and residents can be putting their energy in the short term and the long term, and create this pathway to proactive management. As I talk to some city staff right now, between parks and public works, who have the biggest interaction with city trees, a lot of their work is reactive. They learn about a tree that's a problem, they go out and they fix it. And that reactive management can, can in some respects, become more costly than proactive management, where you're aware of the, you're aware of the problems out there, and you budget and you plan accordingly to manage them over time. So what sorts of goals are we going to have in this plan? Well, what we try to do is achieve goals that are considered SMART goals, and that's an acronym for being specific, measurable, achievable, realistic, and time-sensitive. So some of the examples here, it can be a little bit difficult to do. I know some people have a lot of connections with, you know, programming and information technology and stuff, and they've really, they've really buckled down in that, in designing SMART goals. For urban forestry, it does tend to be a challenge, but that's what we, we're there to do, to take on that for you. We follow some principles that were set out in the upper corner, I don't, and I can't really use a laser pointer to point at things so easily, but the, where it says adapted from KENNY, the criteria and indicators for sustainable urban forest management, that came out in 2011, and that was really a very complete article on how to take a look at a city's urban forest management practices and programs. And so from that, there emerged these three sort of major categories of urban forestry activity. The urban forest asset itself, and so we'll build goals around that, and that's the, that's the trees themselves, that's the, that's the actual, you know, growing green infrastructure out there. Then there's the municipal goals, which is how the city itself, city staff can organize themselves and operate more efficiently for the benefit of the community. And then there'll be some community goals as well, which are the community engagement aspect of urban forestry, as it tends to be. Some of the, some of the example goals then, so for the urban forest asset, some cities will often recommend that we, you know, set as a goal to inspect 15% of trees annually, which might put the entire city's, city-owned trees on a cycle of being looked at every seven years or so. Another initiative, sometimes you see, like the city of Los Angeles put forward, that they wanted to plant a million trees, and that has a nice ring to it, but that may not be achievable or realistic for the city of Sammamish. Something that may be more realistic might be pursuing, at least for the next five years, to say no net loss in canopy. And then, and then from there, you see how we're doing, engage with the public, and say, okay, let's go from there. As far as the municipal, municipal goals go, then we take a look at, you know, maybe suggesting to plant trees annually, or reviewing the tree ordinances, as David suggested. We're not producing a regulatory document here, but we are going to take a look at the ordinances, and as we've had from some stakeholder feedback already, there is some indications that taking a look at how your ordinances are structured is something that we would try to build into this plan to make change there. As well, because it's an adaptive management plan I put up there, you'll likely see a goal that says, update the urban forest management plan. So don't, don't put it on a shelf and let it gather dust, let's keep it active, let's keep adapting. Some of the community goals, forming a citizens' tree board is often, is often one, and certainly the goals towards providing education and outreach, so that your citizens will, you know, work in alignment with the plan objectives as best they can. So the next three slides are some examples of recent projects that we've done, and... So the next three slides are some examples of recent projects that we've done, and I'm going to take you through them real quick here, but the important idea is that we went through these projects, engaging these communities to kind of flush out and determine, you know, what their issues, concerns, ideas, and opportunities were around their urban forests. So as I said, I come with this knowledge and experience of what the nation's doing, but we customize it as an approach to every given city that we're in. So for example, in Boulder, Colorado, their urban forestry issues really hung around Emerald Ash Bore and this invasive species, invasive, sorry, not invasive pest, but Emerald Ash Bore is a killer of Emerald Ash trees. And it's moving across, moving across from the east coast to the west, and they know they have a lot of ash trees in Boulder, Colorado. So that was really the big issue that drove getting this plan put together. Climate change was another issue, and they were concerned about the development and growth of that community and the environmental degradation that went on with it. So we worked with them, come up with a plan that really documented how and where they should plant more trees, and that they didn't really have enough protections to protect the trees in their city codes. Through the process as well, we identified opportunities for more education, including there are a lot of people there who are recognizing the value of trees as being something that connects with their, with human health. So helping them put together some more educational direction that connect trees with human health helps bring urban forestry to the citizens as an important item to consider. And as well, created opportunities for community building and work with them to develop some stewardship programs. On the slide there, you'll see too, we did a canopy cover assessment. If you've been to Boulder, Colorado before, I don't know, but they were determined to have about 16% tree canopy. Bring that up here, and as we'll go in and learn a little bit more about some canopies that are a little closer to home. Through this canopy cover assessment, we found out how many plantable acres they have, and as well, were able to estimate that the annual benefits of their urban forest provide about $876,000 annually to the city's envi... How do I say that? As opposed to the gray infrastructure of installing culverts and drainage and all that stuff, the trees process stormwater, they moderate temperatures, and those are the environmental benefits there that they touch on. I think, but that was through the iTree model.
Question?
Sure, yeah.
So they've been directly able, if you go back to that slide, to save $876,000 in stormwater fees in lieu of by having done this?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I may have missed.
Is this societal benefits?
Right, right. There are societal benefits. I think the better way I like to describe it is like I have a Douglas fir in my front yard, and I can run it through that model, and for the benefit of the city of Shoreline, that tree provides $215 worth of environmental benefits every year. And so you take that, you take one tree in that forest, and you start adding in more and more as you have the metrics for it.
Just to be clear.
And you build that model, right?
The iTree canopy, if you actually go to that website, it shows you, kind of gives you a list, and the dollar figures associated with them. That's where they're coming up with it.
These are societal benefits.
Oh, yeah.
These are not hard cash of saving.
Absolutely. But they're broken out on iTree canopy.
I'm so glad, Madam Mayor, that you've been there, that you've seen that. That's great.
Wouldn't some of those be hard dollars? Because as you referenced, some of it would be that those trees are helping to eliminate the need for additional stormwater. Certainly not a full $876,000 worth, but some of them would, right?
Right. That's what a lot of cities are working towards. Right, right. Another project that we did was down in Roseville, California, so similar in the size and population to Sammamish, but the town had major issues with air quality. This is near Sacramento in the sort of interior valley of California. Climate change, again, is a big issue for that, for citizens in that city. And some of their concerns were related to the oak forests and some reforestation efforts there, as the character of their community was really defined by these oak trees. And they were finding that the tree care standards, both of the commercial tree care practices and even the practices of residences, weren't all that good. And so they wanted to make some sort of pathway to improvement there. So through this project, we did a canopy cover assessment. Again, they had a similar canopy to Boulder of 16%. We found out their plantable acres and their annual environmental benefits from their forest. And through that, we identified ways that they could, where they could plant trees to increase forest connectivity. So those oak stands and the wildlife that accompanied that had pass-throughs in the city. And we identified a lot more opportunities for community partnerships down there. Through this management plan, they're able to connect, you know, more education for tree care and this shade tree program they developed so that they could give away free trees to members of the community, show them how to take care of their trees, and hopefully grow their urban forest in, you know, in private properties, not just the public properties. The third example is in Kirkland, Washington. It's a little bit more closer to home there. We did their urban tree canopy, well, we didn't do the urban tree canopy assessment on this project. That's why there's no data or annual benefits. But we were working with that number of 40% tree canopy cover in the city, so you can imagine that's... I'm excited to see what the UTC results are for the city of Sammamish, because I think it's going to be up there. But, you know, we're still waiting to hear what those numbers are. You know, their big issue that connected to the urban forest was with stormwater management, and I think that's more common in Pacific Northwest cities. But, you know, climate change as well is a concern as, you know, we see longer droughts in the summer and heavier rains in the winter. Some of the concerns that they had as a city is that they weren't able to manage their budget very effectively because they had no tree inventory. They didn't know how many trees they had out there on their streets and right-of-ways that they had to take care of. So that was something that was a common concern amongst all the departments that we talked to, you know, and that they had some strict codes that were difficult to navigate, given the way trees grow. But some of their ideas were to create more outreach on the tree regulations so that it's easier for people to understand and abide by them. And they create interdepartmental working teams to lead the urban forestry management activity as a group. So monthly, a small group of, from public works and Parks Department and community development, they all come together, and they talk about the urban forestry issues that each one might be seeing, so they don't have these silos between the different departments. Opportunities that came out of this, it really, they learned all the different ways and methods now to document their urban forest asset, and because they knew more of what they wanted, they were able to more effectively pursue some program funding through partnerships. So here in Sammamish, we've had over 15 hours of interviews with about 29 different people. And some of the feedback that we've had so far, I've listed up there, there's a lot going on, but again, breaking it down into these categories of the urban, both the urban forest asset, the municipality, and the community, the residents, some of the things they could pursue, you know, as an urban forest goes, there's not really a lot of unified goals for the urban forest in the city. That's kind of self-evident. But, you know, you look over there at the municipal side, and there is sort of a need for a strategy, and the community doesn't have a strong vision. So those are definitely, you know, key elements that we get right from the get-go. But looking at the urban forest, you've got Parks Department are looking at their park trees strategically for safety issues, which is good, but they've never fully assessed those, their forests in the parks. Street trees have been identified in GIS but have not been necessarily assessed. So they know where the trees are, but they don't know the condition or the health or the maintenance needs that may be associated with that. Concerns about wildlife habitat, the quality of the wildlife habitat, forest fragmentation, there's beaver issues in the city, and laminated root rot, that's, all of these are kind of the challenges and issues surrounding the urban forest. As we talk to the city staff, there's no lead arborist on staff here at the city of Sammamish, and there's, you know, an opportunity to create interdepartmental working groups because right now, each department works independently. They focus on their own trees, right? You know, with community development, I think, working with, you know, permits and sort of the residential trees. We've heard, we've heard both from city staff and even from our community workshops that there are a lot of people get challenged with the tree code, and that there's not a lot of opportunities for variances. So we're going to be looking at that a little bit in more detail over the next couple of months.
Just a quick nuance there. I think we mean deviation, just to be clear with...
Oh, the choice of words?
So variance is not a deviation from code that's zoning-related.
Oh, okay.
So nuanced term, but, yeah, just so we're not confusing the two, because they're sometimes interchanged.
Sure, sure. Okay, so deviations from code. As well, you have, we did learn that you guys have a tree bank, a fee-in- lieu option for people when they have to mitigate and plant trees. But some of the staff from Parks Department have already said, well, it's a challenge because we have trees that we don't have, we have more money coming in than we know how to plant with it, like they're not prepared to handle that fee-in- lieu. So those are things that we're going to look at and provide some solutions around. And there isn't just a unified tree planting program across the city. There's community projects, there's, the Parks Department's planting some trees, but it's not, it should be formalized. There should be a number metric there. How many trees is the city putting in the ground to combat mortality, say, in the forest and maintain it? As we've talked to the community, there is some interest in the citizens' tree board. That's not uncommon. You know, having some education and outreach about how to take care of the trees in my yard, or who's responsible for what trees in the city, that kind of clarification is something that people are looking for. But we've also found a really good source of community leaders out there in these nonprofits that we've talked to so far. There's a lot of enthusiasm to participate and engage this program. So we're looking forward to, through the public outreach process, to get even more of that interest. And then some real specific and unique ideas coming out of Sammamish. Some of these community groups are looking, they would love to see the city maybe provide staging areas for restoration projects, places where they can hold plants and pots until they're ready to go out, because right now, they're doing it in each other's backyards, and it would be nice to have a place working with the city for these projects. Because of the, a lot of the developments going on in the city, there's a lot of interest in salvaging the native vegetation, and the community feedback that we've got is that we could do a better job as a city providing some salvage notifications so they can take, make better use of that. And I guess having a water truck is as well, one of those sort of wish list items, as everybody is encouraged at this point in the process to really think big.
Ian, actually, would you mind going back to that?
Yeah, sure.
I just want to share with the council, so for the stakeholder interviews, which we were really very happy with, we, Ian and his colleague, also Ian, interviewed representatives from the business community, from HOA boards, from the Snoqualmie Tribe staff, from SAM Platt, from a couple local nonprofits. We had some interviews with the Sammamish Youth Board members, and then some representatives from the Parks Recreation Commission and the Planning Commission. And the purpose of those meetings was mostly just to kind of get their sense of what the main issues are facing the urban forest in Sammamish, and what they would like to see this plan cover. The public engagement that we're going to be doing later in the process is a little more about priority setting and things like that, but I just wanted to share what we were doing with these stakeholder interviews.
We're headed to the point in the presentation where we're going to be hoping that you all have thoughts on the urban forest as well, that we can get your feedback on. So we did, yeah, we had this public workshop. Councilmember Ross, I think, was in attendance at that, right? Yes, I got you, right? Okay. Oh, yeah, you were there too. Yes, that's right. Okay. So some of you were witness to this community workshop, where we got some thoughts that people are looking for more resources to manage aging trees on their properties, with tree disease and invasive species being some big concerns, you know, and I think they look to the city for guidance on the best practices for those kind of matters. Some of the people came out of that workshop asking for a more helpful tree list from the city. They think that could be something that through the urban forest management plan, we head down a path to maybe updating a street tree list, or a tree list for recommendations for citizens to plant. We're looking to prioritize and incentivize urban forest stewardship, and I think that was really, the intent was to create more incentives for doing best practices on a person's individual properties. There was, there's a lot, a lot of people have concerns around the removal, retention, and replacement policies at the city with a few of those subbullets there. I think the big one that I took away from that workshop is a lot of people felt that the large-scale developers, you know, were sort of at an advantage, but the homeowner who had a tree in their yard, and the tree is old, and the home is old, and these policies don't really give them room to deviate. And there was an interest in a tree board and having a city arborist, one person at the city that all tree-related matters they could go through.
Councilmember Valderrama?
Yeah. Going back to this slide here that you have, a couple of questions on there. My understanding from talking to different cities, whether it was Vancouver, B.C.'s, or others, the majority of the tree losses actually comes from the private property owners, is where the vast percentage of tree losses are taking place. And that's my own experience personally, even in my own neighborhood, have been where there are sometimes issues when you have a tree that endangers the home, that you have to go through a process. But more often than not, we're having problems with people taking advantage on their own and cutting down trees. And two neighbors of mine are now, have had different actions taken against them for those. So I question the perception versus the realities, maybe something that we may have to educate people on, as to while they focus on the big-scale developers and we are focused there, we have the highest tree retention in there. The real loss of trees is the slow-motion clear-cutting that's going on in all of our cities, including ours here in Sammamish. As I said, I've shown pictures to the council between two neighbors, we have 12 trees that came down that were significant, that took place in my neighborhood alone. So that's where we should be looking. On the last point, you have interest in the tree board. How would a tree board work? Do they typically report to a Parks Commission?
Often it's to a Parks Commission or some other superior authority. But, yeah, it's typically the place where tree issues can get discussed and bring matters maybe then towards city council as they learn. A tree board in some cities can have the authority to administer like a heritage tree program, and a lot of the public education and outreach can sort of run through the tree board. Some cities have set up appeals processes where, you know, a tree is, you know, not considered a hazard for removal, you know, according to city code, but the citizen can make an appeal to the tree board and plead a more nuanced case perhaps for that.
And finally, on the city arborist, did the city get the opportunity to explain how the city works with their approved list of arborists today and the benefits that we've had? Because that's been a long, I mean, it comes up every two years, and being a contract city, we've been able to show that. So hopefully, Lyman, that would be something that'd be beneficial for people to understand.
We'll make sure that that is brought in. Basically, we've got several different arborists on contract, so we don't just have one that we can fall back on, but we'll try to make sure that that's included in the discussion.
Because there's a perception that people just go hire anybody, Joe Schmo off the road, and say, cut the tree down, and that's not the case. And so we've been able to be very effective and save money by doing it the way the city's been doing in our...
Right, right. And I don't mean to suggest that it has to be a staff, city arborist at this point either. We'll just be exploring that issue in the urban forest management plan. We'll just be exploring that issue in the Urban Forest Management Plan in light of how the city structures itself.
Thank you. On the same topic of arborist, from your experiences on cities of similar size and canopies, how many have full-time arborists?
It varies. I think that's the shortest answer. It does vary. Some cities will maybe have a contract an arborist and share it between two different municipalities so that it's a 50/50 time relationship, or it becomes a part-time arborist, or it's a full-time ISA-certified staff member, at least, that kind of runs through, so that there is somebody on city staff who can say that I'm qualified to make a decision.
So, for example, someone on the Parks Department has the skill of, as being an arborist, to get two skills or multiple skills with that person?
Right, right, exactly. The difference is, sometimes there's the difference between a city arborist and a city forester. And I think as you get to being a bigger city, you wind up having a city forester, which is more of an overreaching position that works with the community development or with the Parks Department or with the public works to shepherd them along an urban forest management plan.
I don't have any more questions.
Well, this does lead to the point, though, where if you do have more questions, this is the opportunities for thoughts and discussion on some of these ideas. And maybe I'll go back a couple of slides to some of these things that we've been hearing already. And if there's something that you're inspired by or want to build upon, this would be a great opportunity.
I think we'll probably have several questions here. Councilmember Valderrama?
Yeah, a couple of points that came up during the presentation. And first of all, I thank you very much for the presentation.
You're welcome.
I applaud this holistic approach. I've been a big supporter of this. A couple of things that I did not see in the presentation. First, we talked about developing the shared vision, the data, the goals, the objective. But the one thing that I'd like to see and that we have talked about in the past with U-Dub and the others is the reporting back. So you have your SMART methodology to measure and monitor on that, but how do we report back into it? And there was the model that Snohomish County has utilized as one possible baseline for taking advantage of that and having, in the cases Snohomish, they have annual reports to the council and the citizens on how canopy is proceeding. So if we have a known net loss, then you're able to measure against it, and that would be beneficial to take place and to see how that comes into it. One thing that I also didn't see here that's alluded to, but I would like to see if we can get in more, when you talk about municipal ideas and community ideas, is creating a sense of being by being able to have the urban forestry management plan in there to strengthen Semamish and the brand of Semamish that we want to develop as part of that shared vision. And so I'd like to see that called out and how we can achieve a greater sense of being and messaging to people and thinking of them of where it is. We have some people here from D.C., so if you talk about the Tidal Basin or Fox Hall or you talk about Kenwood in the D.C. area, that you think cherry trees or you think of different water basins, and they've got a flavoring associated with those areas. If we can get that sense of being and thought of Semamish and tying it into what we're doing, I think that would also be beneficial and something I would appreciate seeing out there. Thank you.
Sure, okay. Well, if I can comment on those two items, an annual report is something that you had asked about what a tree board does. That is something that often a tree board can hold that responsibility to say, "Hey, how are we doing on this urban forest management plan?" The tree board can often represent that. And then from our feedback with stakeholder interviews, we get a lot about how the character of Semamish is really defined by its trees. Everybody moves here because they like to be in a city in a forest and not a forest in a city. And I think that's something unique to Semamish that we're going to definitely highlight.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, just a quick question. As part of, with all of your experience, do you also, as you come up with more specific goals and things, make recommendations on ways that we can also get funding for that? I can't help but imagine there aren't a ton of grants and things that might be out there that we could use your experience on to help sort of identify those as we go along.
Yeah, yeah, no, we do. We put those kind of elements into the plan wherever we can find them. A lot of the grants these days come from the USDA, through the Washington Department of Forestry, down through, there's a municipal or urban forestry coalition. Yeah, we can definitely have those elements in there for ideas. Some of it comes from partnerships and working with volunteers and that sort of thing as well.
Councilmember Ross?
Yeah, I think we touched a little on this before when we met, but I'm really interested in the economic aspect of trees. It improves property values, especially the higher-end properties per Arbor Day. And then Christian Science Monitor talks a lot about the centers of business, that people are willing to shop longer if there's trade and they spend a lot more money. So it has a real economic benefit. So I want to make sure those strategies are in here. And we seem to talk mostly about the environmental, which is extremely important, stormwater and other aspects. And iTree does not really drive out the economics or the business aspect. And I want to make sure that our stakeholders in the business community are adequately represented from the focus group discussions and make sure we're bringing it into paper and we are focusing on some of those strategies.
Right, yeah. There's only a handful of scientific articles that I can recall where they're talking about how shoppers spend longer in business districts that have trees. And we'll definitely have those inside the plan. The value of trees, it's interesting, if I'm not capable of pulling up a graphic of a typical, how it breaks down, but in the models, it's like 85% of the value of a tree is really its aesthetic value. And it's just, it's a harder one to gain traction, but that's that real estate contribution of the tree to the property. It just doesn't, it always seems a little bit softer, whereas you can talk about very specifically how much, how many gallons of stormwater a tree will intercept based on its leaf surface area. They can model that out. Or how much hours of shade the trees provide in order to reduce temperatures. I mean, a lot of that scientific research is very, very well structured at this point. But the socioeconomic function of trees is still, they're working on it. And by there, I'm thinking of Kathy Wolf and people like her at the University of Washington or David Noack out at the Center for Urban Forest Research.
Deputy Mayor Hornish?
Yes, thank you. I understand a plan is not going to directly adopt or recommend code, but I think you heard a little bit about what we're doing on a contract arborist basis and everything that we think, we feel like we're doing some of this already. Will the plan, you're talking to the community, you're coming up with an overall plan, you're talking to staff at some point as well. You haven't done that yet, correct?
We have talked to staff.
That was part of the interview?
Those interviews.
Part of the stakeholder, okay, that's what I want to better understand. At some point, will you really get into our current code and give us an assessment as to what the plan that we're going to, how good our code is? Will that be an end result or is that something after the plan?
Yes, no, no, there'll be some comments on the code. It's roughly a gap analysis to say, you know, here's where you could be. We read the code and look for inconsistencies and both that get highlighted by people that actually work with the code on a regular basis and then ones that we find just based on our own experience.
I'm going to ask a few questions here. I mentioned this this morning, but I want to make sure that as we go forward with the community that there's a clear delineation between plan and policy. There is some intersection, but there is definitely some separation. I want to ask, too, how aware you are of Redmond's Urban Forestry Management Plan. They are about six months ahead of us right now. I want to ask a little bit about the canopy assessment, too. Redmond is using LiDAR and aerial photography and a laser to measure the density of the tree canopy. Will that be identical to what we'll be using?
No, we're not using LiDAR on this project. I'm looking over today because it's set up with the University of Washington. So their approach and methodology I'm loosely familiar with.
They have, on their website, they have a lot of information, includes a percentage of Semamish already. They have us tagged at 46% for a tree canopy. And I'm curious as to how they came up with that number, if they were using, they have it actually for several different jurisdictions that are neighboring them, including Kirkland, Redmond. They've got about five jurisdictions that they put tree canopy on. So I was very interested because they already have a percentage for Semamish if they use that LiDAR and aerial photography, which leads me to my next question, which is, how much are we working with our neighboring jurisdictions if they're doing plans similar to this? Like I said, Redmond's about six months ahead of us on their plan. It would make sense since they're literally neighboring us if there's any shared value with them. During the course of the meeting that we had last Wednesday, there was some discussion about leaf-on versus leaf-off when we do our canopy assessment and whether or not we'll be able to determine coniferous versus deciduous trees, because there's certainly an inherent value in the coniferous trees from a stormwater retention perspective. We get all our rain in the winter when the deciduous trees don't have any leaves and they can't do anything for us. So that delineation, I think, is very important for our community and understanding that. On the canopy cover, what margin of error are we going to have? Do we have any idea?
I don't. It's certainly something that will be, I think you'll find acceptable. It would be, like I've seen typically out of these reports, it's plus or minus 2%. So that it gets really, really close to a true number.
And then I think it might be helpful for some of our newer council members if we kind of gave an overview of our previous efforts, like with U-Dub, and what we've already done, because I'm not sure the new council members are all up to speed on previous efforts that we've undertaken as a council. So that might be helpful just for some background and context. And then I'm curious on the street trees. It was mentioned, I think, in a couple of places about concerns about street trees. Was our appendix and our public work standards ever referenced in discussions so that they were aware we have a pretty long list of street trees and it gives all the benefits?
Yeah.
Was that ever used? I mean, if it hasn't been, that might be something we pull out, because I think that would be a really good reference tool.
Okay, yeah, no, we'll pull it out. It was one individual that really was having challenges because they had a specific tree that they wanted to use and they were forced into some debate about whether they could use it or not. So it's, there's nothing firm and substantial. We've just had dialogues with people and these are sentiments that they've expressed.
All right, I'm having lights for round two. Any round ones before we move on to round two? Okay. Councilmember Valderrama?
Yeah, well, first of all, we definitely want to take advantage of the efforts that Redmond's doing if we can save anything from that effort. I understood that we were using LiDAR here, so I'd like to double-check that when we get a chance, because that was my impression.
We'll double-check that.
Actually, there will be an item in your packet for tomorrow night where we're actually going to go out and be utilizing LiDAR.
Excellent. And then just as a gut check that I'm curious about, you had mentioned that population-wise and that Roosevelt, California, was similar to us, and their urban tree canopy cover was 16%. And as we had talked about Kirkland and Redmond and ours here typically, we're in the 40s and Snohomish County had gone up to 50. Is that typical of California and Colorado cities to be in the teens?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I chose that one because it's a project that we worked on, and so as a similar city, it's a suburb to a larger city center of Sacramento, so it had some of the flavors of the residents.
Because that might be interesting to also educating our citizens, because there's a perception always that we're denuding our city here. And then for that contrast and check against how other cities are across the country.
Yeah, we typically do have a graphic in the Urban Forest Management Plan or in any urban tree canopy reports that show what we've learned about adjacent cities. So for Redmond, if they have new information, we'll have that graphic in there.
Yeah, no, I'm talking about comparing to other parts, particularly where they come from, is that they forget where they came from and what that looked like when we come here.
Sure, sure.
The northwest, that is a much more lush. Thank you.
That's a good point. I think Boulder is probably not a terribly good comparison. It showed at 16%, but half of Boulder is still on the valley floor in Denver. And Denver is a very arid area, so if you don't plant it and water the heck out of it, it's not growing.
That's why we're talking about the typical California. And he's coming back saying that it's typical California, typical, and we have a tremendous percentage coming from California that complain about our denuding our trees here.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, just a quick clarification for me, and I apologize, this is pretty basic, but when we talk about the percent, what does that actually mean? So the urban tree canopy cover percentage means what?
Oh, sure. So that's the percentage of, like, if top-down look at the entire city, that's the percentage of the city's surface area that's covered by tree, covered by green space. So the other options, if it's 40% tree canopy cover, it might be 40% impermeable surface. And then another 10% or 5% might be water and bare surface comes out of that as well.
So you just said both, you said trees and green space. So are they considered the same or is it trees and then there's a separate number for green space?
They identify the untreed green space. So a lawn versus a tree, they provide, the trees are the only places where the benefits are being provided. So they isolate that out as they go through that imaging process where, and I apologize, I don't do the technology side of it as much. But they're essentially using multispectral satellite imagery, so they can tell from the colors of each pixel, whether that's a tree or grass or building or pavement. And then there's some additional processes that go on in there to ensure that that accuracy and margin of error is tight.
So when we get the analysis back, will it break it down like that? Because I think it'll be important to explain that, because it's a number, but what does that number really mean?
Right, absolutely, yeah, it does. It breaks it down and then, once you have that data, you can overlay it with a lot of, and in fact, I think there was another slide, right, David, that we get a little bit, yeah, about the canopy cover assessment results. That you can overlay it against demographics or watershed boundaries. Certainly, we always break it out according to public property, residential property, commercial and industrial, because those are some big pieces of the pie. And I think that points to one of the questions about how the majority of the forest in a city is typically privately owned in any case. So it behooves a city to help encourage citizens to be good stewards.
Thank you.
Yeah. I don't know, I may have jumped ahead, but we'll bounce back and forth between a couple of slides that I know are there.
I've got one more question.
Sure.
Councilmember Ross?
Yeah, thank you. You talked about SMART metrics. And could you come back at some time with some graphic that talks about the value of the measurement versus the cost? So kind of plot of it vertically, what's the cost, and horizontally, what's the value? You want to make sure you have low-cost, high-value or somewhere in that range. You don't want high-cost, low-value. So we can help us, guide us on selecting the right metrics to apply to manage our urban forest management plan?
All right, all right. Yeah, like not running an urban tree canopy assessment every year because it's an expense that has value for about five or six years, that kind of notions?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ritchie? Oh, sorry.
Actually, it's me.
City manager.
Thank you very much. One thing I really want to make sure, though, that we do bring into our analysis is a discussion of laminated root rot. That scares the bejeebers out of me, to be perfectly honest, a technical term. So basically, we've got a situation where we don't know exactly how prevalent it is. We've got a lot of our tree coverage or tree canopy provided by Douglas Firs. So I noticed, you know, you worked with Boulder on the Emerald Ash Borer and the health issues of their trees. And so I really don't want to lose sight of that fact and how do we deal with that here? How do we figure out what is, what's the spread of it, what's the extent of it, and then also what are our options moving forward to either eradicate it, slow it down, and then replant, those types of things?
All done with questions up here.
So a couple of closing slides then.
City manager.
Yeah, you want to quickly hit this one?
Sure. So, thank you very much, Ian. So a brief look forward at what we're heading toward. Their canopy cover assessment should be completed
Their canopy cover assessment should be completed by this April. And we are not, but we are not scheduled to come back to provide an update to the council until July. However, we'd be happy to share the canopy cover assessment once it's completed before, so you can have a look at it until, as much as you like, until July. And also at that July check-in, we'll have done a fair amount of public engagement. We're planning a couple of events that will be tied to the farmers' markets. We can get as broad a swath of people as we can. So we'll come to you with some information about what people said were their priorities, what their interests were, that type of thing. And then after July, we'll start, we'll probably have a little bit more public engagement afterward. And that's also when the Davy Group will begin writing the draft plan. And then we'll be back here in the fall and winter to start going over the draft plan and working towards adoption, probably in early 2019.
Got a question up here. Deputy Mayor Hornish.
Will any of this, do you foresee driving an amendment to the comp plan or any section of it?
I would say that's probably unlikely, although, you know, given, I would say, especially given that by the time that this plan is wrapped up, we'll probably just be getting going on the, on the update to the comprehensive plan. So my guess would be that perhaps some of the goals or policies that come about because of this plan might be incorporated in that plan. But I don't see, I don't necessarily foresee any immediate changes that would be necessary for the comp plan.
At least on past projects that I've been on, we usually are putting together goals in the Urban Forest Management Plan that align with comp plan goals.
To begin with, okay.
So in other words, the reason, the reason we're encouraging this is because it'll help you meet your comp plan objectives of A, B, or C.
Anything else?
Did you want to go over your last two here?
Oh, okay. Yeah, so let's see, the canopy cover assessment, I think we've kind of addressed most of your questions on that slide. And then, yeah, so some references that I encourage you, especially the National Tree Benefit Calculator on the far right there. You know, tell your, tell your neighbors and your friends to take a look at that and learn about the trees on their property. Put in your zip code, the species of tree, and it gives you, gives you the results that are in that I Tree model from itreetools.org. And then another good resource is the Trees Are Good, which was produced through the International Society of Arbiculture to help connect people with trees. And we've got a long link here of the project website, but there is a, through, through the course of this project, we're going to be releasing a story map, which I think we loosely glossed over. But it's gonna, it's gonna, we're going to create a stronger portal with the city for people to access and learn about the Urban Forest Management Plan project and about the forest itself as information comes available.
We're not listed on treebenefits.com. We have Auburn, Redmond, Bashan, and Woodinville.
Oh, as a, as a, as a zip code?
Yeah, I just clicked on it real quick. Yeah. They put 98275 in there.
Oops.
I think Redmond.
We'll talk to the developer, he lives over in Kirkland. We'll give him a hard time. Okay. All right.
I don't have any up here.
Ian, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We look forward to the continued process.
Good. We're adjourned.